Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes. Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally-owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Welcome to this evening's Board of Selectment meeting for March 23, 2020. Before we get started, I'm just gonna read an announcement for these remotely-conducted open meetings, which is first for the Board of Selectmen. So bear with me, I'm just gonna read through this announcement and then we'll get started with our agenda. As a preliminary matter, I just want to confirm for the record, the members and staff that are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. I'm just gonna go as my screen is set up, so Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
Susan Moran?
Moran, aye.
Sam Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Doug Jones?
Jones, aye.
Also, staff, if you, when I call your name, if you can just respond in the affirmative. Julian Susso?
Present.
Peter Johnson Staub?
Present.
Great, and we certainly have a lot of folks in the background who are working, particularly our IT director, who has been really instrumental in just troubleshooting what has been a very new process for all of the regulatory boards. And so Greg is there in the background, and we really just wanna know how much we appreciate up until the very last minute helping us make these meetings run smoothly. Okay, so let me just introduce, this open meeting and the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This order does not require public participation, except for certain regulatory matters requiring a public hearing. At the discretion of the Chair, a method for public participation can be provided for matters that do not require this, do not, but do not require under this order. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via the Zoom app. The meeting is also being broadcast on cable channel 15 and streamed online at www.fctv.org. And a huge thank you to FCTV, who's also just, you know, really working in a new way, but getting this information out to the public at a time when it's most critical. So thank you to FCTV as well. For those who wish to view the meeting but do not wish to participate, we suggest viewing on FCTV. Members of the public who wish to make comments or ask questions during the meeting may join the meeting as Zoom attendees, which allows you to submit written comments and questions via the chat function. And also to see and hear the meeting in real time. Please note that there is a time lag between the real-time Zoom online meeting and the FCTV video, whether viewed on cable TV or streamed online. The link and instructions for joining the meeting are listed on the agenda, posted on the Town Hall website, and they were also listed with the agenda, you know, earlier when it was posted. So we have received some input from folks who are gonna join us tonight. Also, FCTV will also be posting information on how to access the Zoom meeting during the broadcast of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded, and some individuals who have been invited to make presentations are also participating via Zoom conference. For those of us participating as Zoom panelists on the video conference, please be aware that you can be seen and heard unless you have muted your microphone and/or camera. Panelists are asked to mute their mic, except when speaking, and attempt to minimize background noise in your location to maintain audio quality. Also broadcast and record it if you hit the screen share button on your computer. I'm sorry, excuse me. Also be advised, open windows on your computer may be broadcast and recorded if you hit the screen share button on your computer. Anything captured by the Zoom teleconference will be broadcast and recorded. Meeting materials. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body, and they are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. For this meeting, the meeting packet can be found on the Board of Selectmen page by clicking on the Selectmen's Meeting Packages tab on the menu bar on the left. Meeting Business and Ground Rules. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, please let me cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. Please remember to unmute your microphone and face the microphone on your computer when you are recognized to speak, so you can be heard clearly. Please remember to mute the mic on the Zoom app when you're not speaking, or if using a mobile phone mute, please mute your phone when you are not speaking. When a meeting participant wishes to interject a question or comment, please state your name and ask to be recognized. After the presentation and member discussion, the Chair will ask a staff member to read any questions or comments typed into the Zoom chat by members of the public. All votes for this remote meeting will be taken via roll call. I'll call out your name, and each of you will be asked to repeat your last name before stating your vote. Okay, we're now going to proceed this meeting, and we're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance. I have the flag here at Town Hall, as does Doug Brown, so in any capacity, if you could, join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I think it goes without saying, there are going to be some bumps along the way, so we ask the public to bear with us. The, you know, the goal here is to continue to conduct the business for our town and for all of the residents here, even under these difficult circumstances. So we fully expect that there'll be some technical difficulties, just some logistical snags, and that's fine. The important thing is that we're able to conduct important business and continue to do what folks need and expect us to do. So let me begin, I want to start with, I guess I'll just go right down, just finding my agenda. I have a couple of proclamations that I'll read. The first is the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce 2020 Outstanding Citizen of the Year Award. And unfortunately, the Chamber of Commerce dinner has been delayed, but not canceled, just postponed. And I think it's, probably goes without saying that the recipient this year, we have wonderful recipients every year. This individual, I think, just stands apart in a way that few people are ever going to be able to reach the stature of Brenda Swain, who was the perfect choice this year. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce annually acknowledges and pays tribute to a citizen of the town of Falmouth who has made a lasting impact on the community through participation in a broad scope of activities, and whose commitment to the town has been demonstrated by many years of service beyond his or her profession. And whereas Brenda Swain is an exceptional citizen of the town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, and New England, well-known to all her professional, excuse me, well-known for all of her professional accomplishments and widespread contributions to the betterment of society. And whereas Brenda Swain is a model citizen admired and esteemed for successfully balancing her devotion to her family with years of integrity, tireless civic participation, and commitment to community progress. And whereas Brenda Swain quietly works to build a better town, to build the physical and moral fiber of our youngsters, to man the action boards and committees so vital to all our interests, to preserve Falmouth open space, and to protect the values and rich character of Falmouth. Whereas Brenda Swain's many accomplishments and contributions, singularly and collectively, are memorialized in the minds of those she has touched and chronicled on the pages of organizations across this town as she continues to make a difference in the town of Falmouth. We do herein declare that this citizen is worthy of high praise and great recognition. We therefore, Megan English Braga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel H. Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth by the authority vested in us, do proclaim Brenda Swain, Falmouth's 2020 Outstanding Citizen of the Year. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, roll call, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga? I'll just call it out, Susan?
Moran, aye.
Hey, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Hey, thank you. Such a wonderful, you know, and perfect award, and hopefully we'll be able to celebrate her in person soon. Really, just, it's hard to even wrap your head around all the things that she has done in this town, continues to do, and the way that her work has just rippled out over really generations of the people in our community and those who have been in Falmouth even for short periods of time. Those folks who come for us as summer workers and need food are being fed at the service center. And, you know, those individuals remember that generosity of our town and of the service center and of Brenda Swain and her staff. So we are just thrilled that she's a Citizen of the Year. And hopefully we'll have more news about when we can celebrate her. Second proclamation, this is the National, excuse me, Arbor Day, April 28, 2020. Proclamation. Whereas a town of Falmouth benefits from the graceful canopy of tree limbs that shade us from the blazing summer sun, purify our air contaminants, provide a peaceful respite from the ordinary world, and generally beautify our community. And whereas the town has been recognized by a national program and is known far and wide as a tree city, and whereas the Falmouth Tree Warden, Falmouth Garden Club, and Falmouth Public Schools recognize the aesthetic value of the beautiful trees of Falmouth by organizing a day to celebrate the purity and strength exemplified by a statuesque tree and all living green things. And thereby honor the trees of Falmouth by singing songs, sharing thoughts, and teaching more about the value of trees. Now therefore, we, Megan English Braga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, do proclaim Tuesday, April 24, 2020, as Arbor Day. Could I have a second, Mr. Brown?
Second.
Yes, a slow second.
I'll do the roll call, and so just so everyone knows, I'm doing the roll call as you're on my screen, so that's just, it just makes it easy for me. So Brown?
Aye, Brown.
English Braga, aye. Susan?
Patterson.
Moran, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. One last proclamation. All these proclamations are run, are test-run for our votes later, so we'll get it down by the third one. National Safety, Public Safety Telecommunication, Telecommunicators Week, April 12 through the 18, 2020. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Falmouth Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of the Falmouth Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Falmouth declares the week of April 12 through the 18, 2020, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the town of Falmouth in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. Can I have a second, Mr. Brown?
Second, yes.
And roll call vote, Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. Obviously, so many folks this week, really in the last couple of weeks, to recognize just enormous amount of work going on in our community. And Mr. Patterson, if you would, Mr. Patterson, and then Doug, if you have some recognition as well. Mr. Patterson had really put together a list of the folks who have just been on the front lines of trying to respond to this particular crisis. So maybe, Sam, if you wanna kind of go through your recognition, and then if Doug Brown has something, we'll go back as well.
Be happy to. And this is a list that kind of grew as the week has gone on. First of our Fire and Rescue Department staff, all of them that have participated, the Police Department staff, our DPW staff, our Town Administration staff that have been, you know, there in their offices handling calls, trying to take care of all of the calls that come into the Town Hall and other locations in town. The teachers that are providing online learning support. School Department staff, and the volunteers and public schools volunteers that are providing meals to kids who normally would be on free and reduced lunch. The Falmouth Service Center, their staff and their volunteers that are helping people out. The senior living facility workers here in town, the assisted living facility workers here in town, the nursing home workers here in town. The hospital and health clinic staff, and the many physicians attending their patients, often serving with, serving with limited self-protection equipment these days. Same thing of home healthcare aides that go into homes and provide care to elderly or the infirm or the handicapped, and they're often serving with, serving with limited self-protection equipment. Pharmacy personnel, grocery store staff, delivery truck drivers, residential mail and package delivery employees, bank service personnel, state and federal government employees. And then on the private side, utility service employees, filling station employees, news media employees, telecommunication company staff. And then the many neighbors and friends that are doing grocery and pharmacy runs for those that are not able to get out of the house themselves. And I'm sure that every one of you could probably think of another party that's part of the fabric of support that this community enjoys every day through this very difficult period.
Doug, did you have, Doug Brown, did you have anything else?
I think Sam's covered it. I think just, you know, recognition to all the people that are putting themselves in this unexpected position, having to be brave and still go to work when, you know, dealing with the public, and it's unexpected. And, you know, congratulations to them for hanging in there.
Great, thank you. And just, you know, really to, you know, put underline under Sam's recognition of the employees for the town, whether it's at Town Hall or in the many departments. You know, everyone is dealing with the upheaval of having children at home or older family members that they're trying to care for while they're still trying to carry out their duties. This is not a small town, takes a lot of people to make this town run day in and day out. It wasn't an easy decision to decide to close Town Hall. Obviously, we understand that that is something that is difficult for folks. But while Town Hall is closed to the public, and Mr. Susso can certainly weigh in on this under further discussion as we go down. But, you know, the people who work at Town Hall are still here, and they're doing their jobs every single day. And they're trying to do them under very challenging circumstances, both here in the workplace, because things are just turned upside down. But like I said, obviously, along with all of the personal challenge, that challenges that everyone's facing. So really, you know, we just hopefully are gonna continue to be positive and support each other, because that is really what Falmouth does, and that's the way that we're able to continue to move forward even with all the challenges that are in front of us. So thank you to everyone, and Sam, thanks for putting that particular list together.
Megan? I could just, one more thing I'd like to add to that, and not actually a recognition of, of, you know, it's recognition because a lot of people are doing the right thing, but I also want to recognize that some people are congregating in areas at the beaches that may not be the best. So I'm hoping people will take this warning, please don't make us shut the beaches down. If you wanna get out and take a walk, you should be able to, but let's not get too many people in one place at one time.
Yep, and we're gonna hear from Scott McGann, who's gonna sort of touch on some of those issues in a little bit as well, under announcements. Doug Jones, did you have something?
It was exactly along the same issues. I think we're all set with Scott's announcement.
Okay, yes, he's gonna, again, obviously, everything is fast-moving. In our agenda, we have the announcement period to sort of catch some of those things that come up unexpectedly. And certainly, we're gonna hear from Scott McGann about, you know, Governor Baker's decision that he made today, and then where things stand in terms of how it might impact the town or where we're going. So we'll hear from Scott about that in a little bit. In fact, we're probably gonna hear about it right now under announcements, because that's the next thing on our agenda. So Julian, if we, if Scott is there, Peter or Greg, could we have Scott McGann come on in if possible, please? And Julian, I don't know if while we're waiting for that, did you just wanna make a few comments about some of the, you've been talking and dealing with this daily, just in terms of conversations that you've had with Scott today, or about what we anticipate with the Governor's new order from today?
Certainly, Madam Chair, as you noted, the Governor Baker issued a supplementary emergency order today, which we are still reviewing. It came out this morning, and just to paraphrase, it's a, it's really not a strict order that, that all are to remain in place, but it is to, as the Governor paraphrases, to ensure that workers providing critical services may continue to work to ensure community resilience and continuity of response. And there are, there's a listing of what the Governor deems essential workers. Certainly, the municipality of Falmouth is one of the organizations that provides critical and essential services to our residents during this time, as well as throughout the year. And I'm pleased to have Scott join us and make some comments. I've been working closely with Scott over several weeks, and we've had an internal review with our public safety and all involved in that process in preparations. So Madam Chair, if I may, I'll hand things over to Scott.
Great, thank you, Scott, for joining us. Scott is one of the individuals who has probably slept 1/100 of the amount of time that he normally would in the last few weeks, and has been really just doing such a great job in terms of getting information, but also relaying that information out to the public. So Scott, if you would, just maybe touch upon whatever you think we need to be updated on, and then if you could also just summarize the phone call that we had today with Mary Slater from Falmouth, from Cape Cod Healthcare.
Sure. Boy, I really thought how, how I'd wanted to start this, but let's start it with, you know, in the state right now is 777 cases, nine deaths. Constable counties reporting 30. As of end of day today, we're at six cases. Other results are pending. That number will continue to increase, obviously, as we test more and more, we'll find more. Everybody's familiar nowadays with social distancing and the importance of social distancing. We won't know probably for a couple of weeks the effectiveness of social distancing. Obviously, I think it's gonna have some effect as people are, you know, interacting. The disease should, should take a downturn at some point, but it's hard to know when you're, more test kits that you're throwing at it. And it's also a delayed effect with the average, the average incubation period being about five and a half days. You're sort of getting a hold of somebody who might have had it as long as 10 or 11 days. So we're kind of going back to what conditions were 10 or 11 days ago as we're, as we're testing out now. One of the important things that we had a call today with the, with the hospital to see if they were, at what point they were at. Did we need to do anything more stringently? Actually, we were having the conversation before Governor Baker sent out the, sent out his notice today. The main thing was that the hospital, though maybe busy, that they are okay right now, that they have a fair amount of items. They could always use more, and they're scrouching now to make sure, to try to find all different avenues in which to get the, all the equipment that they need. Right now, there's other hotspots, and a lot of the focus is going to, supplies are going to the more hotspots. So we are in contact with the hospital to see if there's anything that, you know, we can do on our end. On a day-to-day basis, the VNA and the Department of Public Health are doing their thing, trying to put a bubble around each isolated, each case. That obviously grows as the caseload grows. So an average case might include 20, 10 different people that are under quarantine, and you have to track that down. So the VNA and the DPH are doing that. The Governor signed a proclamation to allow the police and fire to at least know some of the locations of the isolations, that way that they can know that the PPE would be required. I, Julian and I are sending out a press release on a daily, every-other-day basis when putting it on our website. We've been doing that. I've got extra help in to answer the phones, answer questions, especially today when Governor Baker put the announcement out. We got a lot of questions from businesses. Does that mean us, not mean us? So, you know, we had a flood of questions on that. In terms of Governor Baker's nonessential, it's a nine-page document. I'll get it up on the website by tomorrow. It's rather lengthy. At the end, the most important thing is if you don't fit on that list, there's a website that you can go to to request that you're nonessential or you're essential, so they can help you make that determination. My guess is they may say, call your local health department, have them make the call, because I've heard that come back a few times. So I guess I'll probably end up making the call anyway, you know, what's considered essential. Things that we did last week. Things that we did last week, just off the top of my head, I've got some notes, you know, when we closed the schools a couple of Fridays ago, the state was not recommending that. Actually, at the time, Monica Burrell from the state was telling the school commissioners that they weren't recommending it. We did it anyway on Friday after consulting with the, with the school's physician, and then by Sunday, the state did it. So we were a little bit ahead of a curve on that, and obviously, you know, things change quickly. This is not the same conversation I was having with you at the selectments meeting a couple of weeks ago. I closed personal care last week, and I'll get a retroactive board of health vote on it at our next meeting. I thought, I see, I've been looking at, see, being a health agent, being, you know, a town manager, you're kind of on an island, you know, you're here in the town, but you're trying to get the best practices of other towns. So one of the things I do every day is scour some of the websites of towns that I, I know the health directors are really good at their jobs, and I don't, I'm not bashful for stealing ideas. I actually got that from a couple of towns, one being Melrose, which I, the health director there is very good, and thought that that made sense, that some of the personal care and that the nail salons and some of the nail salons are pretty direct contact. So I made that decision. I asked Iry over at the town council whether it was okay to do it, do it retroactively, which we did. Now that actually would fall onto Governor Baker's. So we did a couple of things ahead of time. Obviously, it's hard to think of everything, especially now. And one thing I meant to say was, you know, with the six cases that we have, there's definitely, obviously, community spread going on in the town. It is no doubt about it, has, may have been going on for a few weeks. And so, you know, the social distancing has to really be something that we stick with. And with the beaches, we got a lot of pictures Monday morning from the, you know, what Chappaquay Beach looked like with 300 cars, 100 cars in it at high tide, which obviously, you guys all know is not a very big beach to begin with at high tide. So, you know, we obviously need, I was asked to close those, you know, consider that. I think people need a place to go during the day after being stuck in the house, and it's nice if we could spread out somewhere in the cold air. My daughter and I took a walk around Long Pond yesterday. Forgot it was four miles. It was a long one, so, but we did it. And, you know, so everybody kept their distance, and it was good. You know, so I think that's important that people have a chance to kind of go somewhere, kind of get out and spread out.
Just on that point, so we don't, we had talked today when you and Julian and I spoke about, and then the governor's order came down, so I know we're kind of going to reassess, but the idea of in the coming days or the coming week, putting up some signs to remind people about social distancing at the places that, you know, we sort of talked about and noted are some hotspots.
The DPW has already made those up. So you can ask, you know, I think Peter McConney comes on next, so you may want to ask him, but I believe he's made the signs up. They should be probably going up tomorrow. Just emphasizing that, but I think they're important that people can get some fresh air and rather than being stuck.
Right.
You know, as far as, as far as meeting, daily calls with Chief Small and Chief Dunn, and Julian and I have been together probably several hours a day, every day. And we're just going to take our cues from the state as much as we can. I have a call each week with the state, lasts about an hour, and as many calls that we can get on, and I just try to relay the information as best as we could. IT's helped a lot in Julian's office to make the website better, so it's a dedicated page just for COVID-19. I would never profess to be real good at IT work and the website, so they've helped me out on that. You know, hopefully, that website's got everything you need. It's also got on there, we just put on there a couple of days ago, is how to get tested. You know, you can do the processes of 4Cs, using 4Cs to test. Obviously, still need a doctor's note. As more tests come in, the stringency of how to get tested would obviously get lighter and easier. So that's an ever-changing, and as I get more information, we'll update the website on a daily basis.
Great.
Any questions?
Hi.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Sam. Yep.
Yeah, it seems like this community spread is a huge bucket of anything. We don't understand how it goes from one person to another. Can you give us any insight? Is this like, you know, somebody that was infected touched a door handle, and you happen to be the next one in the store, and you picked it up that way? You know, can you give us any insight of how we can help protect ourselves?
Well, they don't know a lot about it. I guess the best way to look at it is, yeah, a door surface is some sort of thing that gets a cough or sneeze, especially if it's, not to sound gross, a wet cough or a wet sneeze on a surface would have a more of a chance of sort of hanging around, especially a hard surface. And that could be picked up that way. I think the most, the majority is going to be close contact with droplets, and that's what they're trying to learn now, is that the droplets may not be, need to be as big. That means it may hang as a mist a little bit longer, and you might have walked somebody, somebody who just coughed and sort of absorbed it and breathed it in when you walked by that area. But yeah, cleaning, sanitizing, and staying six feet help a lot with that. You know, would they be able to trace it back to whether that happened one way or the other? They're not going to know whether you got it from a doorknob or you got it from a person. Just not going to know that level of detail.
Thank you.
And just one thing that I just want to emphasize for the public, because I know I've received, and I think that they were mostly addressed to all of us, a lot of emails from folks about sort of two issues. One is, you know, getting a lot of anecdotal sort of direct information from either people who work at the hospital or who are family members of healthcare providers, and who are raising concerns about the availability of PPE and, you know, really whether or not there's adequate safety measures in place. We talked about that during our phone call, and as Scott noted, the hospital is accepting, and actually, I think you can take them right to Falmouth Hospital in the fax-in entrance for people who work in construction or in any trade, even in, you know, the, some of the businesses that are closed down now, some of those personal care businesses, if they have extra masks, if they have gowns, if they have gloves, the hospital will accept them, and then they'll kind of cull through it and figure out what fits their needs. But they are accepting them. There is, and this, this group, this board is aware, and our health, you know, our Board of Health, our Health Director is aware that there is, you know, there aren't excess materials for folks. This is happening nationally, we see it every day on the news, it's happening internationally in some places. So I want people to understand that this, this town is having conversations with healthcare providers to assist in any way that we can, and to make sure that our first responders, you know, as well, that the town employs firefighters, police officers, that they have the equipment that they need, and then if people have excess, that you can bring it to the hospital. So we are aware that that's a challenge, we've had direct conversations, we'll continue to have those conversations, we've opened up a dialogue with Cape Cod Healthcare to say, you know, if there are, as things evolve, if there are specific asks that we can send out to the community and just raise that level of awareness, communicate that with us. So we are in direct contact. Scott is regularly having conversations, as he noted, but we're in direct contact with hospitals to understand what's going on. We also recognize, the other thing that, you know, we're getting a lot of information about, you know, people hear the number of individuals who are noted as positive, and they're saying, you don't realize it's much larger. Those are the official numbers.
Well, that's the numbers that have gone through a test kit and through the process. But yes, of course, there are people that are asymptomatic, I mean, some studies show up to 19%. There are people that don't really seek medical attention, they're off, they're not, they're not part of the test, and that's why you get the community spread. You're only going to know what you know. Unless you've gone, got the test, got it positive, that's when we know.
And so we, you know, we're aware that there are other individuals at the hospital that they're either waiting for test results on. We understand that. We are only going to share, it's only appropriate to share the official numbers once we get that information back. So, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails saying, I don't think you guys are aware of what's really going on because the numbers that you're sharing are low. They're low for a reason, as Scott noted, they haven't gone through the whole process. But we understand what the, what the situation is. We, you know, we were having those conversations. So I just want the public to, to know that, you know, conversations are going on every single day, and Julian, and Scott, and Peter, and all of the other folks at Town Hall are, you know, really gathering that information and have an awareness, and there's communication going on with a lot of the stakeholders. So I don't know, Julian or Scott, is there anything else on that? And then we can take any comments. I see you, Sam, and I see you, Doug. So let me just let Julian or Scott, if they have anything in particular.
I do have a follow-up, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, because I know we've gotten some questions on that. First, as Scott noted, we have a draft on those signs, and they'll be posted yet this week in conjunction with Public Works. We appreciate Peter McConney's assistance with that as well. Those will be posted in the beaches and in parks and in other areas where people tend to congregate. Having said that, I also wanted to clear up something we got several inquiries about over the weekend, and that's actually addressed directly in the governor's order issued earlier today. Item number three on the governor's emergency directive that he calls limitations on gatherings. He says, the governor says specifically that this order does not prohibit gatherings of more than 10 people in an unenclosed outdoor space, such as a park, athletic field, or parking lot. And of course, that concept would equally apply to beaches, which essentially are a form of a public park here in the town of Falmouth. So I just wanted to underscore that the governor's emergency order does not prohibit gatherings there, but they asked that be not more than 10 people, and people, folks need to be reasonable, and that's why we're going to give them courtesy reminder signs when they do gather, so that they don't, do not gather in large groups and enjoy themselves in a healthy way.
Thank you, Julian. I'm just going to go through the list, Sam, and then Doug and Sue, in the order that you raised your hand. So go ahead, Sam Patterson.
Yes, one of my neighbors happens to be, works for one of those firms that actually administers the home health aides, and she described how one of her colleagues came to work with a mask on, but was clearly feverish and ill, and was in the unfortunate position that they could not afford to take off work. Well, eventually, they let her go, but please, I think the important thing people have to recognize is you have a responsibility to everybody else. When you're sick, you should be staying home, and we have to be self-disciplined in that regard, so we don't spread this, because the economic impact is, of course, going to be enormous.
Yeah.
Doug Brown?
A question for Scott. Scott, are there specific guidelines regarding construction? I've had a lot of questions about the construction industry, a lot of projects in people's homes are underway, and they got their houses ripped apart. Can they continue if it's, as long as the contractor feels like there's a safe environment?
Yeah, I'm looking it up right now, it's in there. Construction workers who support the construction operation, inspection, and maintenance of construction sites and construction projects are considered essential. So when I, yep, I didn't have it memorized, I apologize, Doug. But yeah, so under the, under the exemptions, yep, so what I said to you is on there, so I'm going to post this up soon as I can. But it does say, construction workers who support the construction, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to try to clarify that.
Sure, just to round out what Julian mentioned, in terms of groups of 10, it's fine to gather. I think we have to emphasize that you still really want six feet apart, so that's something that you want to be clear. You could have 10 groups of 10 on a beach, but make sure each group is at least six feet apart.
Scott?
No, absolutely.
And so, so we'll, you know, we're going to post those signs. Obviously, you know, it's, we're trying to strike a balance between, you know, if this is prolonged, we have, you know, children who need to have somewhere to run around, to get fresh air, fresh air is always a healthy thing, and there's plenty of space in this town, thankfully, for people to get that fresh air out in the open space and still distance themselves and still not be on things like playgrounds necessarily where some of those germs can spread. There's lots of fields, lots of beaches, lots of Long Pond, four miles of trails to walk there. So, you know, we just, we want people to be responsible, we're going to put the signs up to remind them, and obviously, we are going to continue to take guidance from Scott and his department and the Board of Health as we go forward. Scott, is there anything else that you want us to know, or?
Call the Health Department with questions. We'll take any ideas or suggestions as well, we've gotten plenty of those. You can email us as well, it's health@falmouthma.gov. We are aware that six is not the accurate number. People think, oh, these guys are foolish, they think it's, that's just what we get on our desk. And the true number of any disease is never known. You know, foodborne illnesses, they say 50, you know, if there's 80 million cases a year, you're only getting to know a few thousand of them maybe. So it's usually that's the way it is with them, and so, but it just, I think people just need to know that there is community spread, and the social distancing is really our best shot at sort of keeping it down. For the most part, I've been pretty impressed with what I've seen, at least when I've been out, but, you know, I'm sure there's a ton of exceptions that I just haven't seen, so.
Thank you very much, Scott. Any other questions from the board for Scott before we let him go?
Madam Chair, could I make just a comment, please? I just want to thank, as town manager, I want to thank Scott for his dedicated and tireless work throughout the portion of this pandemic that's already been behind us, and much lies ahead. So Scott's leadership as a critical department head, working in public safety and health, is much appreciated, and look forward to continuing to work with, with him, with all his knowledge and guidance.
Great, yes, we all second that for sure. Thank you very much, Scott, and I know we'll be talking again soon, I'm sure, so.
Good morning, Julian.
Okay. Take care, thank you. I think I'm supposed to tell Greg that, oh, it's done. Okay, thank you, Greg or Peter, for letting Scott go. Okay, under, let's see, next, we have, are there any other announcements from folks? I have one announcement, I have to read the, actually, that'll, that'll be under Town Meeting. So let me just do one other item before we move to our hearing, which we're a little bit later on, but could we have Peter McConney come on in? And Julian, did you want to just address the affirmation of appointment of a Public Works Director? Hey, Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, my great pleasure as town manager to recommend my colleague, Peter McConney, for appointment as Director of Public Works, and I am officially requesting the Board of Selectmen to affirm my appointment. We know Peter well, it's been my pleasure to appoint Peter as, both as town engineer and later to a promotion to Deputy Public Works Director during my tenure as town manager. So I do look forward to continuing to work with Peter in this enhanced capacity, and I thank him for his dedicated work in preparing himself for this position. We see a lot of Peter, and certainly, that's going to continue, we look forward to it.
I move that we affirm the appointment of Peter McConney as the Director of the Public Works Department.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to roll call. Brown?
Aye. Brown, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye. Congratulations.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, congratulations, Peter. I think you're on mute there, but I can say that, and I said this to Julian, this is sort of one of the few highlights on our agenda this week. So thrilled to have somebody stepping into that position who brings the level of experience that you do, and just the personality that you have. We've all seen you working with the men and women in your department, and it's just such a great relationship, and I think really, you know, DPW in this town, unlike a lot of other communities, just does everything. You know, that department touches upon almost every single thing that takes place in this town. And so to have somebody who has such a deep knowledge of Falmouth that you do from all the years that you've done, the work that you've done, I think just, you know, really puts us so far ahead of the game in terms of the projects that we have coming up. So thrilled that you put yourself forward and that we're able to continue to just have that level of professionalism and just the incredible work that's been done by the DPW, you know, for a long time, but particularly in the last few years, the projects that have taken place are really just astounding, both the long-term things that we plan for, and then all of the emergency, unexpected, you know, projects that have come from storms and other issues that really are, you know, we'll talk about it at our meeting, and the next day it's addressed. So thank you, and we are thrilled to have you, and if you wanted to say anything, or I know you have a project that you've got in the works that you were going to tell us about as well, so welcome.
Yes, thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege for me to be appointed and serve as the Falmouth Public Works Director. I appreciate that very much. I do have a longstanding with the town of Falmouth. I started in 2007 as a staff engineer, and I was promoted to acting town engineer in 2009, town engineer in 2012, deputy director in 2015, and most recently, the interim director as of January of this year. So this is basically the top of the line for me. This is the position that I've worked basically my whole career.
So this is basically the top of the line for me. This is the position that I've worked basically my whole career for. And I really appreciate the opportunity that you've given me to serve as Public Works Director. And we do have a lot of highly talented and dedicated individuals in Public Works. I do believe they'll also be very happy too. And we will keep on working and striving to get these projects done. And I do really appreciate with everything that's been going on in the last couple of weeks, with the virus and all, that you were able to fit this into the agenda. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Peter. And do you want to just let folks know? I know you and I had spoken just about the Queens Byway area. I've had a couple of emails just asking about that section of the road. Can you just give an update on where that project might be?
Yes, actually, I think it's only, I'm number two on the business, but I can give a quick update on it. Our contractor, we're looking forward, with the ongoing situation, things are changing daily. But we're looking forward to a week from today, actually today, starting on the construction if we can. The anticipated timeframe would be about four to six weeks. And I think I'll talk more about that when we get into the agenda item. But the plan is to start it next week and to keep on going with the project until it's completed. As everyone drives down that roadway, they do know that it's, it's in bad shape. It's terrible shape. There's a lot of potholes and we're losing the roadway. So it needs to, needs to really be done. It was that way before the water main even started. So at this point, it's really in dire straits of being completed.
Right. Okay. I didn't, I forgot that that was on for later. So we'll come back to you on that. So thank you very much. Congratulations, Peter. And we will be talking to you again later on in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Peter.
Thank you.
Great. So if we can have Peter McConerty can go, go ahead on out. And if we can bring in the individuals that we need to have come on in for, I think it's Amy and whomever the attorney is for Amet Clower tonight for flow neutral bylaw for the public hearing. And I'll just. If anyone sees their notice there, if you can feel free to chime in.
I can read it for you if you want.
Yep, that would be great. Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 23rd, 2020 at 7:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room or virtually anyway, at Town Hall in Falmouth, Massachusetts on the application of Kevin P. Clower, the second Esquire of Amet Clower LLP on behalf of Paul and Anne Rulinsick for a wastewater flow variance under chapter 180, section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called flow neutral bylaw, for a proposed raise and rebuild of the existing dwelling to increase number of bedrooms from three to five at 51 Worcester Court in said Falmouth parcel 4600H000019. Per order of the Board of Selectmen and the publication date was Friday, March 13th, 2020 in the Falmouth Enterprise.
Great. Thank you, Sam. So if we can have the applicant come on into the conversation while that's happening, I'll just remind the board and the public that we obviously have, we have a guideline for waivers and variance of this type. And they note the priority areas that we are to consider, which I'll just highlight them for the public. Economic development, affordable housing, mixed use development in business redevelopment zone and municipal use. Those are not exclusive reasons why we can go forward, but those are the guidelines that we've sort of noted as reasons why we might consider a variance. So how are we looking, Greg, or this piece of the meeting?
Yes, apologies. I think we just got our stuff in order. So we have, what have members in? I'm going to be bringing Attorney Clower in in just one second. And when that happens, we should see everybody lit up. Just give me one second.
Mr. Clower.
Nope.
Mr. Levert.
No, I'm a little bit further down the agenda. I think I was accidentally invited in.
Okay, apologies on that. Feel free to shut off your video and we'll put you back up in just one second. Thank you all for waiting.
There we go.
There we go.
Sorry about the delay there. I will exit.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Hi, Kevin. Welcome. If you want to go ahead and.
We could probably add Amy Lowell to the meeting now also though.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. I don't know if Greg heard that. We should have Amy Lowell also added in. Great. Hi, Amy. We can just see the first, there we go. Great. All right. So let's begin. Let's start with Kevin. If you want to tell us a little bit about what's being requested. And then we can have the board ask questions and then we'll get, we'll get some way in from Amy as well.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me all right? This is still new and exciting. Before I begin, though it's not necessarily germane to our application, I do want to kind of echo what Mr. Brown and Mr. Patterson were saying earlier about the amazing good that's happening in town. And it always makes me think of the quote from Mr. Rogers, which is in times of crisis, look for the helpers. And I've been really inspired by, you know, what we've seen from our community. And also, and I said this at the zoning board of appeals hearing last week, been really impressed and thankful for the efforts the town has put into facilitating things of this nature so that we don't, nothing slips through the cracks and we continue to operate. I was really impressed with how well it went zoning board of appeals meeting. And, you know, the, there, there's not enough thanks to go around to the people that need to be thanked on this. So I wanted to just get that out of the way. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amet Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicants, Paul and Anne Rulinsick, the owners of 51 Worcester Court. They are in the process of planning to raise or build the existing dwelling at their property. And in doing so, will increase the number of bedrooms as they're seeking to accommodate an expanding family, adult, children and grandchildren. I want to correct a misstatement made in my letter. The existing structure at the property is a four bedroom house, not a three bedroom house. And that was confirmed by the health department previously. This lot is on slightly over 17,000 square feet and it is located within the Little Pond Sewer District. That sewer district limits by right development to four bedrooms. As such, we are requesting a variance in a board of selectmen to expand to five bedroom. But for the fact this is on a sewer, this lot could have accommodated a six bedroom system with, with the new design house and septic. The applicants are in many ways a victim of timing as, as again, prior to the information, implementation of the Little Pond Sewer. A request of this nature would not have required approval from the board of selectmen. However, our town code, section 18056 allows for someone to request a variance from the flow neutral bylaw. The board of selectmen may grant this if, one, the wastewater superintendent determines that capacity exists. And if that capacity does exist, if the applicant can demonstrate, one, that a system could be accommodated on a site meeting Title V regulations. We previously submitted a plan to the board of health reflecting a five bedroom system that does so. And again, they could have actually implemented a six bedroom system under those old guidelines. We are aware of the recommendation referral from this law. But I do want to just raise a few matters that were highlighted in her memorandum. The increase in this case is not in fact from three bedrooms to five, but it would be a four bedroom to a five bedroom, which the site is more than large enough to accommodate. The, this is a situation where, where the implementation of the sewer actually had a negative impact on this particular applicant. And I don't think it's correct to say that this decision would be precedential. As, as each, each application is in fact viewed uniquely. You're not bound by previous decisions. And this is in fact, one of the larger lots within the area. This law points out that there's 1,200 homes under 50,000 square feet within the Little Pond Sewer District, which is true. And the GIS map has a really helpful comparison tool, although I couldn't do the entire Little Pond Sewer District of the 87 homes within a 500 foot radius of this particular site. There's only seven of equal or greater size. So this is not a situation where if the board would allow this particular increase, they'd be bound to allow increases on every applicant seeking to make renovations to their house or changes to their house. It is, I think, a unique circumstance. In sum, I do feel this is a modest increase for a unique and a large lot, which again, could have accommodated in much a larger system by right, but for a quirk of timing. Given the uniqueness of the situation, it's really not precedential in that sense. So we would respectfully request that the board issue a variance from the flow neutral bylaw to allow five bedrooms. And I would of course be happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Great. Thank you. Does the board, I'm going to allow the board to ask any questions at this point. And then we'll hear from Ms. Doug Jones. Go ahead.
Could you, was the square footage you said 17,000 square foot for this lot? Is that what I thought I heard you say?
Yeah, it's 17, it's 17,166 square feet.
Okay. And the provision was about 10,000 per bedroom is what the general guideline is?
I believe that's in the bylaw under certain circumstances.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this particular point in time? Sue.
Has there been any conversation with the butters or neighbors?
I'm not aware of any specific conversation with the butters or neighbors about this matter. It's not, the, the house construction itself, but for the bedroom count is a by right matter. They're not seeking a special permit or variance from the zoning board of appeals. So I don't think that there's been a specific conversation about the bedroom count.
Thank you. Amy, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Let me, go ahead, Sam and then Doug. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, this is a question really for Amy. I think our real limitation now is the limitation on our discharge permit. Have we made any progress in that regard? Have we actually got an option at all for increasing the discharge from our wastewater treatment plant?
The, the current permit limit is what it is and will not be increased until we get additional discharge capacity designed and approved. So the progress, progress has been made in that we submitted a, the town submitted a plan to the state in December of, of last year with, with plans for the, the next, next stage. But there is still quite a bit more to do. The hope is that we would, through this current planning process, get an additional, get additional capacity within the 2024, 2025 timeframe. But obviously that, there are still many steps that need to be undertaken to successfully to make that happen, including town meeting appropriations and construction.
Does that answer your question, Sam?
Yes, it did. And, but it sounds like there's a great uncertainty as to when that will happen.
Yes, the target timeframe is 2024, 2025, but there are a number of steps that have to be taken to get there.
Thank you.
And Doug Brown, you had a question?
It's not exactly a question, just a, a point that Mr. Clower made a good point that there's only seven other houses in that sewer area. But with potentially other sewer areas to be going around the rest of the town, we should be thinking about the whole town, not just that one sewer area.
Ms. Law.
I'm, I'm, the seven houses is, I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Clower was referring to. I think within a specific sub area that he looked at, there were maybe seven other properties of the same size is what he was talking about.
Kevin.
Yes, that's correct. We, we, I simply took a look at, I received the memorandum today. I took a look at the houses within a 500 square foot, 500 foot radius of this particular site. We didn't do a survey of all 1,200 lots within the Little Pond Sewer District, just as it's time and cost prohibitive in a lot of ways. So I was looking at a sampling of lots within the immediate area, just to show that this is, you know, a relatively unique lot. And again, trying to address the precedent aspect of it or the, the idea that it might be precedent setting.
Doug Jones.
If you're going to use the number seven, that's out of how many lots?
Eighty-seven.
So it's about a tenth of them? Nine.
Just go with it. So say, yeah.
You're, you're, you're the math teacher, but yes.
Amy, did you have any, so any other questions from the board? And then I'm just going to have Ms. Lowell just sort of speak kind of in general about her recommendation that she's made. Any other questions at this time? No? Okay. Ms. Lowell, do you want to just sort of go through your recommendation and anything else you'd like to share with the board? Oh, you're muted still.
Sure. This, this is a little bit of a, of a tough one because all we're talking about, as Mr. Clower said, for this individual property is an additional bedroom, which obviously the wastewater plant can accommodate flow from one additional bedroom. What I expressed in the memo that I provided to the board in February was that the flow neutral bylaw was specifically drafted to help the town live within its planning thresholds for this area, for the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. So the, the, the collection system is designed for, and the wastewater treatment plant system and the recharge area are designed for a certain flow. And there is some flexibility, some contingency within that number. But the, but the, the, the flow basis assumes that flow will be limited within the constraints of the flow neutral bylaw. So this certainly, as I said, the wastewater treatment plant could accommodate flow from one additional bedroom. But as I, as Kevin had mentioned, there are approximately 1,200 properties in this sewer service area that could, that could request the same variance for going beyond, going beyond the four bedroom by right allowance. And that if that, you know, once, once you say yes to one, it, it does become a precedent and becomes more difficult to say no to others. So ultimately, this could cause the town to exceed the planning thresholds for the sewer system from this particular area. In addition, I should note that that this flow neutral bylaw doesn't just apply to the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. When it was passed, it, it is written in that, in the bylaw that it applies to any sewer service area in town. So these same standards apply elsewhere as well. I do want to make clear that the flow neutral bylaw does allow for expansion on existing lots of up to four bedrooms if they are, if the, the residential property has, has fewer than that. It, but what it does is for existing single family properties, it, it caps that, the number of bedrooms at four. Unless the lot is larger than, unless the lot is 50,000 square feet. So there is a square footage number in the bylaw that would allow you to go beyond, go up to five bedrooms. And that number is 50,000 square foot.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Any questions from the board? And then I'll let, if Kevin wants to respond, but do we have any questions about what we just heard from Amy or comments? Kevin, did you want to add anything else?
Realistically, I don't think that there is much to add. I think it's, there is a mechanism by which the, the board may allow a variance if they choose to do so. I'm aware, I'm aware that there are certain guidelines that are set forth, but those are really geared towards commercial development, not for residential. And, and there, there is a mechanism by which it can be done. It is at the board's discretion. I think that this, this matter is unique enough that the board certainly could, if they chose to, grant it without fear of setting a precedent that they're not willing to follow moving forward. setting a precedent that they're not willing to follow moving forward. It is a larger lot in the area. It is, could have accommodated up to six bedrooms but for a quirk of timing. And, you know, there is the, the room and system to accommodate it. That being said, it is a discretionary variance. And so I, I can't and won't try to refute anything Ms. Law said. She's completely accurate. So.
So let me, let me do this just because we have this, you know, sort of, we're conducting this public hearing in this way. If there are any comments, what we're asking, you know, if there are any comments from the public, we're asking them to enter into the Zoom chat as we discussed earlier and as was noted in our agenda and share any comments either in favor or against this particular request. I don't believe, and I hope any of the other members of the board will chime in. I didn't receive an email about this particular issue. We had also asked individuals if they wanted to weigh in to send emails if they didn't think they'd be able to do the chat. Did anybody else get any correspondence on this particular issue?
Patterson did not.
Okay, I am seeing here that everybody has answered in the negative. And I'm also seeing on my screen that Peter Johnson Staub is telling me that there are no comments about this particular issue in the chat queue.
I'm moving to the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a?
If, if I may, only because it is a, a request for a variance and therefore subject to super majority rules. If the board would be willing to have a discussion, because if, if, if the board is leaning towards a negative vote, I would rather seek to withdraw this without prejudice. So if there's any chance that the board be willing to have a discussion on this prior to closing, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, what's the board's feeling as to that?
Draw my motion.
Okay, so.
I'm inclined to believe that if it's gonna be a twenty-five percent increase that I would not be supportive of this.
Okay, any other way in?
That's my feeling also.
Patterson, if you'll just, just for the record, if you'll just note your last name when you make a comment, just in case there's any, I know it's being recorded, I just wanna make sure we are very clear about recording exactly who's saying what. So both Sam Patterson and Doug Jones have said they'd be leading in the direction of a negative vote on this. Doug Brown, I see you raising your hand.
I would also be at this time leaning in a negative direction. Once in the future, when we have sufficient flow, we can make maybe some new determinations on lot size and maybe if you can prove that a appropriate-sized septic would fit on a lot, maybe we could consider it, but not at this time.
Not at this time.
So I think you're getting a feel from.
Math, math may not be my strong suit, but I can count that much. You know, I, I, again, I, I would ask then, given the board's current leaning, that you would consider allowing us to withdraw without prejudice.
I move we allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
That's Doug Jones. I have a second from Sue Moran. Let me go through. Jones?
A point of order? Do we need to close the hearing first?
I don't think so because I think he's gonna withdraw it. So I think if someone wants to correct me, I think if he withdraws it, we don't actually, we're not closing it. That's part of why.
You're correct, yes.
Okay, so I had a sec, I had a motion and a second. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay, so.
Thank you very much, guys. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Amy. And Amy and Kevin can come out of the chat, Peter or Greg. Thank you both very much. We'll go back to our summary of actions. We have approved application for a change of manager of an all, of a seasonal all-alcohol common victor license at nine Lescum Avenue, Woods Hole. I think that Greg, this is where we would like to have, I believe this is where Attorney Leb Hertz and the Estes, yes. Hello, Attorney Leb Hertz.
Hi, good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Excellent, right on time as usual. So some things don't change, at least there's.
This is the, is this the seven fifteen hearing?
Exactly, yeah.
You know, I see the name Katie Estes in that little corner of the, of the computer here and I, I, I can assure you I'm not Katie Estes, and if I am, she's having a very bad night here. But thank you for having us tonight. Tonight, I'm representing the landfall. And it's been, shall I proceed?
We have the documents in front of us, so if you wanna go ahead and just give us some information, we do have, just so you know, whatever you've provided, the board does have Ms. Estes' resume as well as all the other documentation, documentation for a change of manager. Hello, Mr. Estes.
Again, you can't see them, I, I don't think, but I do have the, the manager Donald Estes with me and I have Kathleen Estes, the proposed manager here with me tonight. We're at my home over here on.
Jim Estes is also participating as well. He's on the link as well.
Oh, yes, wonderful. You know, it's a pretty straightforward application. The landfall has been, has been in business for seventy-four years. Started out as nothing more than a sandy beach and a seawall and over the years has become sort of an iconic restaurant, Woods Hole. You can't find anybody who hasn't been there, who hasn't enjoyed the place. It's really been a wonderful, wonderful amenity here for the town of Falmouth. As we were waiting for the hearing tonight, I, I was speaking with Donald Estes. He's been working there fifty years. The young lady who we're seeking to change the manager for tonight, Kathleen has been working there for fifteen years and I myself was scrubbing dishes there about forty years ago. I submitted with the application a curriculum vitae for Kathleen Estes. She goes by Katie, by the way. She has been working sort of as a de facto manager since twenty fifteen. This, this business has been in the Estes family for all seventy-four years. Started with David Estes. It's presently owned by Donald here with me tonight and his brother Jim. And Kathleen or Katie here is, is third generation. So it's really my pleasure to, to be here. And we certainly hope the board will look favorably upon the application. Katie's here, she's prepared to answer any questions that you might have. I think you have a very, very experienced person. She, as I said, she's been working in this capacity now for about five years. And we're sort of trying to tidy up some of the paperwork, give her dad Donnie maybe a couple extra days off a week this summer, and we thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome. We, we certainly have all the paperwork in order. Doug Jones, go ahead.
Just as the pro forma that we always do, Katie, we just make sure that you're aware that as a liquor manager, you will be the one responsible for any violations that occur at the business, and this is a question we make to every liquor manager. And I understand you don't have experience in this exact position, but you certainly have held the, you, you've been involved in the position for a while. Thank you.
Any, any other questions from the board?
I move approval.
Okay, can you just say? Okay, that was just a motion by Sam Patterson, a second by Doug.
Second, oh, okay.
Or Doug Brown, any Doug. All right, all those in favor, by roll call, starting with Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Susan?
Moran, aye.
Okay, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, congratulations and thank you for putting together this packet. It's always very helpful for us to have all that information about your experience and, you know, just to have that in front of us makes everything a bit shorter, even though it starts later. We try to get you wrapped up quickly. So congratulations and whenever that season starts, we hope it's a great season, so thank you.
Thank you. Good, good health to everybody. Thanks, thanks again. Take care.
All right, take care. Okay, next on our agenda, we have application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license for Barnesville County Agricultural Society, Barnesville County Fair, twelve twenty Nathan Ellis Highway, seven twenty to seven twenty-six, twenty twenty. Do you have a motion on that?
I move approval.
Can you just say your name when you do it?
Patterson, I move approval.
Moran, second.
Roll call, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Sue?
Moran, aye.
Sam?
Patterson, aye.
And Doug?
Jones, aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, we have approved application for a fortune teller's license for special events, Lance Norris. We have this, I didn't even, I can honestly say I don't think I've ever done a fortune teller's license. Exciting. I don't think we have anyone here for this application. Does anyone have any questions about it?
I would just move approval, but also I did appreciate the notification to the police department of any future events that he's gonna be performing.
Great, thank you. And that's second.
Jones.
So Moran had the second. Roll call, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Sue?
Moran, aye.
Hi, Sam Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Doug Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, great. Down under administrative orders, we have vote to accept FY twenty wellness grant from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group in the amount of six thousand dollars to the Personnel Department grant account. Do I have a motion?
I believe it's six hundred more.
Six hundred, I'm sorry, didn't mean to alarm anybody. Excuse me, six hundred.
This is Jones, I would move approval.
Moran, second.
Okay, Doug or Sue for second, okay. Roll call, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Sue?
Moran, aye.
Sam Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Doug?
Jones, aye.
Okay, thank you. Vote to accept.
Madam Chair, a point of order, did we, did we skip a license for the Holy Ghost Society? Should be Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society?
Yes, we did, thank you. I, I don't know why I skipped over that, so let me go back, thank you. Approve applications for one-day wine and malt liquor license, Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society, Portuguese Festivals, to be located at four oh eight Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth, Sunday, five thirty-one twenty, Saturday and Sunday, seven twenty-seven twenty, seven twenty-eight twenty, and Saturday, eight fifteen twenty.
Jones, I move approval.
Okay, Jones, move.
Second. Second.
Roll call vote, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Sue?
Moran, aye.
Sam Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Doug Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, and just a reminder, just so that the public recognizes, we're approving these events. It's quite possible, obviously, we will follow whatever the state protocol is or, you know, the local health department regulations are, should this situation continue in terms of limitations of gatherings. We have to approve these timely and be hopeful that at the end of May, these events, some of these are taking place, can take place. Obviously, it goes without saying that all of these events, even if they're approved by us, are subject to any regulations at the state or local level. That, that would be included. Okay, so going back to vote to accept donation from the Falmouth Road Race Incorporated in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for the Fuller Field Playground. What a really tremendous, just tremendous donation from an organization that has done so much for our community.
Jones moves, moves acceptance?
Patterson, second. With gratitude.
Okay, Patterson, second, okay. We'll do a roll call. Brown? You're on mute.
Brown, aye, with thanks.
Thank you. Megan, English Braga, aye, with gratitude, thank you. Sue?
Moran, aye.
Great, Sam?
Patterson, aye.
Okay, and Doug?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. What a really wonderful thing to get that playground that we saw pictures of at our last meeting. Just trying to get that project going forward. Okay, next we have authorized project eligibility, eligibility, eligibility letter, excuse me, for, I'm not good when you're not, when you guys aren't near me, falling apart. For regarding forty B comprehensive permit application for Rosewood Place located on Percival Road near T-Ticket Road intersection. Application proposes construction of sixteen single-family three-bedroom houses, of which four are proposed to be affordable. So just Peter Johnson Staub and Greg, I'm wondering if there might be some folks who wanna weigh in on this, so I just wanna remind the public as we're getting started, if this is something that you want to share a thought or a comment about. We didn't receive any, I think via email, but you can enter in via chat the way we discussed previously. So Tom Bott, I see you here. Are you gonna kind of walk us through this particular item?
Madam Chair, I think I can lead us off.
Great, thank you.
So just to provide the context, this is one of those forty B applications that the town is not funding and it can proceed with or without any support from the Board of Selectmen. For those who may not be familiar with Percival Road, it runs between Trotting Park and Sandwich Road. You described the, the proposal. It is sixteen single-family homes on five and a half acres. All of the houses are proposed to be three bedrooms. As we've discussed on a number of occasions, this does not align with the town's affordable housing priorities or housing priorities in general, that all of the units be three-bedroom. We have a real need for smaller units to accommodate many of our smaller households here in Falmouth. So you have before you a letter that was crafted based on input from all of the development staff, including Tom Bott, Carla Ferroni, Noreen Stockman, and others. That we're asking mass housing and the developer to consider two changes to the application. One is to incorporate some one- and two-bedroom units and the other is to change the access to the property. And I would defer to our town planner, Tom Bott, to describe that access issue.
Great, thank you, Peter. Tom, welcome.
Thank you, and this is one of the reasons I love working with Peter, because he does such a fine job with these things. As we talked about before, this is this first step, the request for site eligibility. So there's not a forty B that's on the doorstep of the, of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but there will be after the, the site approval letter is approved by the Commonwealth, by mass housing. So Percival Road is about twenty-six hundred feet long, and when you get to the end of it, it's Sandwich Street, it winds up behind the Cape Birdian Club. It's about a car length wide, squeezes by a retaining wall, and then makes a very hard right turn back onto Sandwich Road. It is, I would not wanna drive a fire truck down there, although I'm sure the folks who drive fire trucks can, can deal with that. If this was a subdivision, we require the Percival Road to be connected to harness, drive, and it was allow better access for fire access and for safety equipment. In effect, this will allow not to have to drive that twenty-six hundred feet to get out of Percival Road to, to one end. It'll allow you get easily on and off of, of the roads and out of the development. It won't cost any lots, it won't cost any units. Essentially shifting those lots over, you need about a forty-four-foot right-of-way. That'll approach a little bit on the seventy-five thousand square foot lot. They wanted to leave it one end to buffer this development from the folks who are selling the property. But it would not be considered to be onerous, would not be considered something that would be, render the project economic and feasible. It's just better access for emergency services and it would be done exactly that way if this was a subdivision rather than a forty B.
The board has in front of them the draft letter, which really outlines what both Peter and Tom have spoken to in terms of the recommendations that town staff have put forward. Are there any questions about that draft letter or any thoughts on things that we would look to change? Go ahead, Sam?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I thought it was a very well-written letter and thoroughly vetted, and I think the letter really is, it's an excellent position that the town should be passing on to a mass housing. So I would be moving approval, but I don't wanna cut off the discussion by that other members.
Any discussion? We have that motion on the floor, but any discussion?
I just had one question concerning whether it's gonna be sewed or in property septic.
Individual septic systems.
Thank you.
Not a question, just I, I agree with the, the letter and the description of the concerns.
Your second of Sam's. Oh, go ahead, Peter, I'm sorry, I don't wanna cut you off.
Yeah, I just, I thought it might be worth noting that the property is within the Water Protection Resource District. It, that's, that's mentioned in the letter. It is in a zone that does not prohibit residential housing. But it is in an area that is. is, is within the Long Pond Water Source Water Protection District. Um, so just wanted to point that out, it's not a black and white issue, as I said, that particular zone does not prohibit development, um, but it may be worth mentioning.
Great, thank you, and it is mentioned in the letter, so. Great, thank you. Um, I had a motion by Sam to approve the draft letter, do I have a second?
A second, Matt.
Okay, second by Doug Brown. Roll call, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye, Sue.
Moran, aye, great letter.
Doug Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, and Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, Tom, thanks, Peter. Okay, next we have, um, I'm forgetting anything, we have a request for sign variance for off-premise promotional signs, Falmouth Commodores Baseball Clinics, mid-April to July 31st, 2020. We have our list of locations, um, and this is, uh, not something totally new to us, so any questions about it?
I move approval.
Doug Brown is.
Second.
Okay.
Patterson.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye, Sue.
Moran, aye.
Hey, Doug Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, we're going to be going back to Peter McConerty, Greg, if we could have Peter McConerty come back on, he's gonna give us a further update on the Palmer Ave reconstruction area, um, and if we need a moment, I don't know if we sprung that on him, oh, there he is, okay. Welcome back, Peter, if you wanna, um, just sort of fill in a few more details about the project you were discussing with us earlier.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, I'd like to say, uh, Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. That's a nice touch to that. Yeah, the project we're, we're looking at to start, uh, is with Lawrence Lynch Corporation, they'll be doing the construction, um, once again, with, with, uh, everything that's going on, we're looking forward to, uh, starting the construction in Monday of next week, um, you know, as long as everything goes as forward and their contractor does not get shut down. Um, what we're looking to do is start up at the intersection of Palmer Ave, basically at the Osborne Rue Gallery, and work our way down to basically the, uh, easterly side of the Town Green, which would be the old, um, Bank of America Building, and we're looking to basically, uh, mill the asphalt, remove, there's not a lot of asphalt on the roadway, so we're looking to mill, uh, the asphalt out and put four inches of brand-new asphalt down on the roadway, remove the concrete curb on both sides of the roadway, and reinstall granite curb, um, add a crosswalk across from where the Coffey O is into the parking lot, add a crosswalk and a splitter island at Palmer Avenue, um, anyone that's, uh, walked out or driven through that, that's a very, very long, um, crosswalk area to be able, for someone to be able to navigate and cut across the street with that. So we're looking to put a splitter island, basically where the old, um, blinking light was, and then, uh, also in that island, put a flashing light back into the island.
Great, I was gonna, you know, that's, that's such a good addition to getting back to that catch-your-eye kind of blinking light, that's great.
Right, right, not that light, it's been gone for a few years, um, we're, we're gonna move it back a little bit from the intersection, it's been hit a few times by trucks maneuvering the corner, um, but we're gonna be putting an updated, a, a new, uh, light on that, uh, blinking light, uh, and we're going to add a crosswalk there, one at the Coffey O, another crosswalk on Humans Ave that takes you, um, basically from the, the end of Humans Ave over into the Town Green, we've been requested to have, uh, crosswalks in that, uh, place before, so we're gonna take advantage while under the construction and put a, um, a crosswalk along with the ADA ramps and the tactile strips. And then we're also gonna redo the crosswalk at the, um, the church there, and going over to the Town Green, we're gonna have, we're gonna completely, uh, take up pieces of the sidewalk and put in new, the, uh, the ADA ramps, uh, with the, um, uh, the tactile strips, and this will be from the, uh, first congregational church over to the green. Along the green, along the, uh, uh, southerly side of the green, there was a lot of pink granite curbing, and if you, if you walk it, it's all flush to the ground, and it's beautiful curbing, it's, it's gotta be six to eight inches wide, so our plan is, uh, there's about 600, 650 feet of it, we're gonna pull it all out and they're gonna reset it with a six-inch, uh, reveal, so it'll all be basically back to, uh, where it should be. I think over the years, it's down to flush, because over the years, um, the roadway's been paved over and over again, so we're gonna bring it back to, uh, where, where it should have been. And then we'll be, uh, adding drainage to some spots over there where there's some, uh, we have some problems with the drainage, we'll be, uh, re-striping, repaving, and, um, in the future, what we're looking to do on the south side, and it's part of a future project, probably part of the Main Street Route 28 project, is we'll be looking to add a sidewalk from the Coffey O and down around the corner to hook it up with, uh, connect it to the sidewalk at Humans Ave, um, that, in this way, there'll be sidewalks on both sides of the street, um, it'll be very, uh, basically it'll flow, it'll flow together, there is enough room on that side of the street to put the sidewalk, we're gonna make sure we can, we can, uh, have at least five feet to add that in, and then, uh, like I say, when we get into the reconstruction of Main Street, we'll be looking to do the, the sidewalk, but at that time, the granite curb will all be in, so we'll just have to, uh, you know, pull out some of the long, put some gravel down and put the sidewalk in, so I think the project, uh, as I said earlier, the project needs to be done, it's, uh, it, the, the roadway is really failing, um, and I think as this moves forward, we would, our intention is to get it done by Memorial Day, so, uh, by the Memorial Day holiday, at least that section of the road will be completed.
Great, any questions? That's, um, definitely, I mean, the road needed it before, and then with all of the water main work, it's really, um, just taken a beating, so that's great to hear. Doug Brown?
Yeah, just a question for Peter, did you say that you will not be able to do the sidewalk at this time, but you'll do the preparatory work with the curb? Did I hear that right?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, uh, what we'd like to do is put, get it ready for the sidewalk, put the curbing in, get it ready for the sidewalk, there are some ends and some residences along that side of the street there, and before we start looking at putting the sidewalk on that side of the street, we, we really want to reach out to them and connect with them, and, um, so we want to do it correctly, so I, my intention is as we start to do the Main Street project, we'll include that, um, as, as, as part of that, and that'll be basically one of the final design aspects for that roadway.
Great. Any other questions for Peter? Great, thank you so much, Peter, appreciate it, and I know folks will be looking forward to those improvements, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Everybody, uh, Ms. Chairman, if you will allow, um, we're just, uh, trying to bring, uh, Mr. Palmer in for the next, uh, item in the agenda.
Great, great.
I guess I do have one more thing for, uh, Peter, I know he gave us a nice written update on the, uh, progress of the water main work and the paving, uh, I was gonna make a mention of that in the announcement, but I saw that Peter was on the agenda, so I didn't know, did you want to just give us a quick two-second, uh, update on the time, final timeline?
That, that's a timeline with, with the water main project?
Yeah, a lot of people have been asking about when will the road be paved, and I think you told me that it's gonna be probably in September or October, the final paving.
Yeah, the intention is, so, so where the contractor is right now, basically the downtown area is all, is, uh, completed with the water main, there are several services that need to be, uh, finalized, and there is, uh, I believe, a couple of hydrants that need to be, um, finalized for the hookup, but for the most part, the construction is done in the downtown area, so, um, the downtown Main Street outside of, uh, what we're looking at, a Palmer Ave here, basically will not be paved until the fall timeframe, um, the contractor at this time is working down by the, uh, the rec center and going down towards Falmouth Heights Road, they, um, just directionally drilled underneath the, the drainage culverts, basically underneath the motel there next to the, uh, recreation center, so they buy that and they're getting ready to start up on, um, Davis Straits in, uh, East Falmouth Highway again, um, and the intention is to have that done before, uh, Memorial Day also, before the state comes in and shuts it down for that construction period, and then in the fall, they'll be coming back and we're doing the final pavement and final cleanup, there might be some moments, see, but the heavy majority of the construction will be done in the spring.
Great, any other question about that?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Great, thank you, Peter, appreciate.
Thank you.
I think we are just waiting for, um, for our next item, but let me just say it's gonna be, um, place, uh, vote to place override on May municipal election ballot. Um, I will read while we're waiting for, um, our clerk, town clerk to come on in, um, we did receive correspondence on this issue, um, from, from Joe Netto, and, um, I indicated that as we would if he were able to appear here in public and, um, and share the sentiment that, that we would read it off, um, and this is about, um, obviously about the override for the fire station, so let me just read this while we are, um, getting Mr. Palmer on board. Chairperson Braga, if the world was normal now, I would appear in the public comment part of your meeting and speak, what is written, uh, speak what is written below, sorry, but I will not try to contact you through Zoom or phone, um, going through all of that, so he's just going to share this, asking us to share this, uh, via reading it out. To the Honorable Board of Selectmen, according to your published agenda for tonight, we'll be voting tonight to put the override question on the ballot. Exactly three weeks ago tonight, I appeared before the FinCom and spoke to them about this same subject, and I'm writing to you now. As our elected leaders, I am urging you not to put this question on the ballot amid the economic downturn with no end in sight, and the town-state-country world is going through presently. I am fully aware that the current finances of the town are excellent, as many of the FinCom members commented as I spoke to them three weeks ago, but it is not today that pays the bills, it is tomorrow and the days and years later in the future that pay them. These are uncertain times, but I urge you to vote no on this question by studying what happened in FY 20, excuse me, FY 2009. This was my message to FinCom, we had to return to town meeting in May and transfer funds to close out the fiscal year. All of us in the room there, were only, all of us in the room, there were only five of us that were there to do that on the current committee. Reason, expected revenues, local and state, never came down from Boston, and our local tourism did not meet expectations as projected. On 60 Minutes last night, a member of the Federal Reserve Board stated that it took almost 10 years for the nation to recover financially from the financial crisis of 2008. Today's Cape Cod Time reports that the town of Wellfleet is looking at reviewing their proposed budget for FY 21. They are doing the correct thing to protect their citizen taxpayers and the future of their town financially. Their town manager is calling for a complete review of their FY 2021 budget. Please read the article before tonight, we do not have a federal relief package yet from Washington, our governor Baker and our legislate, legislature are engaged in helping the citizens of the Commonwealth. Please do your part and protect the citizen taxpayers of Falmouth. We have many stores in Falmouth closed, employees out of work, and you're going to consider raising taxes for perpetuity tonight by placing this question on the ballot. True, it will be the citizen voters that decide this, but we elected you to lead, please do so. Nothing is that important that has to be done now, we can always revisit this later when we have a clear economic foundation for the future. Thank you for your consideration, and that's from Joseph Netto. So I read that, and then, um, uh, Mr. Suso, did you want to, uh, weigh in?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to note that, uh, Finance Director Jennifer Mullen is, uh, on the line, and she, she could be added as a presenter, uh, to comment upon that if it would be the desire of the board.
Yes, um, if we could have, um, Jennifer added in, and, uh, Mr. Palmer, if you wanted to just sort of speak about the, um, sort of the logistical piece of it, um, placing the override on the ballot, anything that we should be thinking about or considering, um, as we vote tonight? Hi, Jen. I think you're just, there you go.
Are, are you looking for my comment now? I'm sorry, it was, uh, I thought Jennifer was gonna speak.
However we want to do it, we can hear from Jennifer first, or whatever, whatever we'd like to do, I'm happy to, um, hear from either one of you, so, go right ahead, if you were planning, if Jennifer, you were planning on going first, um, if you want to weigh in and talk about, um, sort of respond to the concern that we just heard raised by Mr. Netto, that would be great. You're just muted.
Yes, unuse yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I did see the email earlier, and I, um, really not to the override question, but to the concern of, um, other communities looking at budget cuts and things of that nature, um, it's really premature right now to look at anything like that, I do want to mention that, um, the town of Falmouth has done a great job with their reserves and stewarding their reserves for, you know, as I have said many times in front of the Board of Selectmen, for anything, um, you know, an emergency coming up, I didn't think it would be an emergency like this, I always thought it would be, um, some sort of, um, you know, weather-related disaster that we might need our reserves for, but right now, the, um, you know, we won't really know with revenues for a little bit, um, because they do lag, but they will be off, um, definitely declining, but we're gonna keep a close eye on it, and this, we'll have certain options moving forward, so we don't want to, um, you know, plan or, um, make decisions without facts on, you know, a doomsday prediction. I think we need to take it a step at a time, um, the override question on the ballot, um, the tax bills, that won't be payable until January 1st, and I think at that point, we have a much better idea of what's going on, um, and, you know, and I guess, just to weigh in a little bit, you know, if, um, when it does go on the ballot and we do have the town election, if the community feels that it's too expensive at that time, they could vote no, but right now, um, I just think we're in a really good position, um, to weather, to, of how we're gonna weather this storm, I won't say, we will be able to weather this storm financially, but what will be the approach? And the first approach is definitely not looking at the budget and cutting services, and that's the last thing I think, um, people would want to hear right now in this time of uncertainty, so I just want to reiterate that we have, um, we have a good reserve, we have areas where we can go, we will be looking at it, um, and so that's, and it's not like 2009, when, um, you know, we didn't, it didn't take us 10 years to rebound, you know, we've been, over the last five or six years, we've really been able to weather that storm, and, um, been able to rebound with that, but in 2009, the town really didn't have anywhere to go, um, we didn't have a good reserve buildup or anything like that, and if we do use reserves, it wouldn't be for the long term, it would be for the short term, until we could get back up and running, um, financially, but we just don't know what it looks like, but I just wanted to assure everybody, you know, we, um, DOR has been putting out guidelines, I think, um, if you had a revenue deficit, you could fund it over three years, there's just so many options right now, and the first option isn't really going to the budget.
Great, and just to, to make a comment that I think everyone is aware of, that, you know, this, this town has really been fairly conservative, um, with our budgeting, and in fact, the criticism we sometimes get is about, um, being maybe a little bit too conservative, you know, we have people asking for expansions of certain things which we've, which we've tried to build in, in a responsible way over the last few years, um, you know, building up, um, certain departments, adding people back in, um, and so in general, um, you know, this is a town that I think has stewarded, um, taxpayer dollars, um, in a very, um, responsible and, um, sort of methodical, thoughtful way, and erring on the side of being, um, you know, really more careful and conservative with those funds. Every town, um, I know that Mr. Netto was raising the issue of what other, every town is different, um, just like every family deals with their, uh, finances differently, have different sources of revenue, um, every town is really different, so, um, you know, I absolutely understand his concern, and I think it's something that's on the minds of a lot of folks, and ultimately, if the ballot question, uh, if the question goes on the ballot, it will be something that the voters decide, um, you know, when they, when they put on the issue, um, and that's why it is done in, in that way. Sam?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I think the other, I, by the way, I, I share Mr. Netto's concerns, I think we are looking at a huge economic setback for many years in the future, um, so when I first read his, his email, I said, well, right on, Joe, I'm, I'm with you, but, in, in retrospect, I think, um, kind of along with Mrs. Mullen is saying, is that, you know, we, we really, as select board and as town manager, have the option to actually budget how we spend the money along the way, we don't have to invest in eight firefighters just because the override passes, as I understand it, I certainly welcome, you know, uh, Finance Director Mullen coming in and correcting me, I'm, I'm wrong, but we can actually manage the expenditures of the town if we see that the revenues aren't gonna be coming in. I don't think we ever want to get in a position where we have to lay off people, uh, but I think further down the road, as Mr. Mrs. Mullen is saying, uh, we'll, we'll have a better picture of what our revenue stream is gonna be like, and, and I think we- And, and I think we can make or not make commitments to hire people to fill certain positions as we see things unfold.
Jennifer, do you just want to speak to those DOR regs about the override?
Sure. Well, for the first year, the override passes, we do use that money to fund eight new firefighter positions. We have to use that money for the first year. After that, we don't. That's really in the DOR regulation.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Doug Brown and then from Mr. Palmer.
I'll just repeat the comments that I made in reply to Mr. Netto's email. So we asked the fire chief a couple of years ago, what does it take to really fully fund and staff the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department? He didn't just quickly reply. He gave it a lot of thought, and he went back and did his homework. He did a top-down assessment of the fire department, and he came back to us and said, I really need eight new people to staff this fire department correctly and safely. And we've made an agreement with the union that we will operate safely, and we'll have two people on every piece of apparatus, and no more single people responding to fires. And we have a big need in this town for public safety, and we've been lucky for a long time. And I don't want to keep rolling the dice. So I, I'm sticking with it. I appreciate Mr. Netto's comments, but I think we need to take this to the voters and let them decide. I think the voters will support it. So that's my belief.
Yeah, if I can just speak to that issue, sorry, Mike, and then we'll go to you. But, you know, I, I think we have always, as a board, sometimes erred on the side of, and I know we haven't done an override, but when we come to questions in general, letting the public or letting town meeting decide. We are making a decision to put a question before the voters, and then the voters make the decision. You know, we've done that on many important issues. And again, sometimes we're talking about the voters of town meeting, and sometimes we're talking about the voters of the town of Falmouth. And that's all that this board is voting on, to support putting that question before the voters. And I think, you know, we are weighing two important things, fiscal responsibility and public safety. And I, I do believe that, you know, at that level, that's something that the public should have the right to weigh in on and make that decision.
And if I could, if I could add one more comment, you know, during the last recession, it was tough. It was a structural problem with our, our banking system. I don't think that's the case this time. I'm not a banking expert. That's what my financial advisor's feeling is, and I tend to agree. I think this is something that's going to pass, and we're going to take a big setback, but we'll recover. The, the other point that I wanted to make was, we can't just, just wait forever and hope that we're not going to have a major problem in the situation that we're in. And when our town departments cut back in the last recession, all the department heads were very, very effective at really slashing their budgets. They don't spend every penny this, the whole thing has been a big shift in what it used to be, how they used to always spend every penny because they were afraid they weren't going to get it next year. It's a whole different dynamic in what we have going in this town. And I would defy anybody to find a million dollars in our budget that they can slash to make this safety, you know, come into compliance with public safety. I just don't see it possible.
Thank you. Mike?
Can you hear me now?
You can hear you. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I certainly won't comment on the merits of the question. It's the prerogative of the Board of Selectmen to place those questions on the ballot. I did do a mock-up of the, of the questions for, and shared them with Julian. And there is enough room on the ballot. Obviously, we have to wait for the candidates, their return nomination papers, determine how much of the ballot that will take up. But there certainly would be enough for the override question and the charter review question, and room for, the biggest sized ballot you would want to go would be 18 inches. In fact, that's the largest ballot that the machines will accept, without going to a third page, which I discourage. It really taxes the election equipment when you go to have two ballots for every person being entered. They take, they take seven to 10 seconds to, to, to be accepted by the machine. And although it doesn't sound like a lot of time, anybody went to the polls to vote realizes it does take a little bit of time. So it, it does appear to me that all the questions, and I would ask maybe the third non-binding petition be the shorter version in order to ensure that all the questions will fit on the ballot. But it seems to me that they all could fit on the ballot, and I would just ask the board that to vote to place these on the ballot sooner than later. I know there's a 20, a 35-day, I need to have those 35 days prior to the election in order to get that going. But if I can get these ballots going prior to that 35 days, I can get them back sooner and allow for absentee balloting, which I think people are going to look as an alternative in, in the atmosphere that we're, we're, we're living in right now, to use absentee balloting as it needs to vote. So I would ask sooner than later. If not, I know, I don't think you can do it this meeting, but at least your next meeting to vote to place those, all those questions on the ballot, so I can start that process.
Thank you very much. Doug Jones?
Mike, could you just talk to us about the effect of putting the, the questions on the ballot if town meeting has not voted on them?
Well, you, you have the authority to place the questions on the ballot. Town meeting has the authority to vote the appropriation. So if they did not vote the appropriation, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to spend that money. You're, you're voting the authorization for the override, and town meeting votes the appropriation of the money.
But theoretically, town, the town itself could still pass the override, even though town meeting didn't authorize the, the spending of it.
Correct. So you, it would be mute at that point unless you get.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jan or Julian or Mike? Okay, so before us is to vote to place the override on the May municipal election ballot. Again, we have May as the date. We will address that later. That may be something that, who knows what happens. But at this point, you know, we obviously have to go with that date, and so we do need to vote. You know, we need to move forward on these, as we just heard from Mike. So any further discussion?
I'm comfortable with actually going ahead, and I know Mike said we don't have to do it now, but I would go comfortable with moving to place the override on the May municipal election ballot at this time.
Okay. I think Sue had said second right before you, so just for the record. All right, so roll call, we'll have Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
I am Patterson.
I don't know what he wants to say, though.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike, and then sorry.
Patterson, aye.
Great, and then.
I'm sorry, can I go?
Yes.
Drop this, but you are place, you are voting to place the override on the ballot. There's still all the charter review questions that you'd have to vote on to place on the ballot also, and that, that non-binding question also.
Yeah, which we're going to get to.
Just, just not the override.
Yes, great, thank you.
Have you already placed the charter ballot questions on the ballot?
Could you say that again, Doug, so that he could hear you?
We had already placed the charter ballot questions on the, the charter questions on the ballot.
No one has delivered them to me, if you have. If that's the case, then that's fine. But the form that's going to be on the ballot hasn't been delivered to me yet.
Can we, I can't recall, we talked so much about them, but Julian, could we just look into whether or not we officially voted those at one of our prior meetings?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll double check and confirm.
Okay, and if not, obviously, we'll have on an upcoming agenda. Okay, so we had a unanimous vote to place it on the May municipal ballot, the override. So thank you. Let's move on to the next question, which Mike started to speak to a little bit, which is, discuss, consider petition for Board of Selectmen to sponsor non-binding ballot question. This was about the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant. And as Mike Palmer just noted, there is a, there is room, in his opinion, on the ballot to have a two-sided, two-page ballot, and to, if we so choose, to include that non-binding ballot question about the power plant. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, that is the case. In my opinion, there would be room to place it on the ballot and not going to a second page of a ballot. I, I would request that maybe we go to the shorter version of it, because it's unknown how much. I haven't seen the questions, I actually don't know how long it would be if it was the longer version.
I think the longer version, I mean, I'm just, I'm not working on your ballot, but the longer version was very long for the ballot that we have this year. But the short version, which I think you've seen, is just a couple of, it's like five lines, just on a normal-sized piece of paper. So definitely much shorter. Sue, go ahead.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that go on the ballot. I think the shorter version is actually very, it, it's a good summary, I think, on the ballot. Sometimes people appreciate brevity, and I think it's a very crucial public safety issue that, that would serve us well to keep in, in the minds of every voter. And so I think it's a, it's a very important ballot question.
Okay, we have a motion. I would second that, but I would also look for any further discussion that this board has before we vote it. Go ahead, first Sam and then Doug.
Well, Patterson, second.
Okay. Great, thank you. And Doug, did you want to make a comment? Doug Jones?
The other comment I was going to make is that we still don't know that the May election is going to occur. So I would reiterate our request to actually go ahead and send the letter that was asked for before, and I would also support the putting this on the ballot.
Great, so neither of those things, we can certainly do both. I think this board raised that in our last meeting, that we really believe that the board can send the letter and then obviously follow it up with whatever vote takes, you know, whatever the vote is whenever it takes place, to just emphasize that. So in terms of, we have a motion and a second for putting this on the ballot. All those in favor by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And that's it? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mike. I think you're going to stick around for the next discussion, or if you want to. I don't know if you want to weigh in, but we are going to discuss upcoming town meeting and elections. Yes, Julian?
Madam Chair, just to confirm, did that vote include the request to complete that letter from the board to the governor as Selectman Jones had requested?
It's just not on our agenda, so I just, you know, if we feel that it is, it's not one of the items on our agenda. So I don't know if we want to scoop it up with that, but it's not listed as a separate. What's the board's feeling about whether or not it's closely related to the placing the non-binding question?
Didn't we vote that at the previous meeting when we discussed it?
I don't know if we voted to send, do we vote to send a letter at the last meeting, or do we put everything over to this date?
I, I thought it was discussed similarly with, again, it was not listed as a separate item on the agenda at that time. But I think the same comment came up and was responded to positively from members of the board that you did want to go forward with a letter. But I, I'm, I'm good with that, just wanted to make certain that it still remains the determination of the board.
I think it does. And why don't we just for open meeting law, just to comply, let's just, we'll put that as a separate item on an upcoming meeting. We've already talked about it. It'll be a quick vote to just, it can even be under administrative orders to direct you to send a letter to that effect. Okay.
And we'll, and we'll have a draft to actually approve, right?
Exactly. Maybe you can put together a draft, we'll have something to look at. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have discussion of upcoming town meetings and election. So bear with me for a minute, I'm just going to pull up the letter from David Viera. If we, Mike, while I'm pulling that up, do you want to just speak to the issue of the March 31st election that was going to take place and just where things stand with that for the public, so that they have some awareness?
Sure, the Senate voted later this afternoon to postpone that election until May 19th, which coincidentally is the, the date of our annual town election. That's something we could both, we could handle both elections on one day. And I guess, anything could change, I guess, as, as we move forward in this, with the virus and whatever, that, that date could theoretically be moved, and the town could, could vote to move that election too. But if we're holding one, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to hold the other one. And then again, the concern for people's safety as we move down closer to May 19th would always be a concern whether holding that at that time.
Great, thank you. Sue, I saw you had your hand up.
Sure, just quickly, if the clerk would say what election he's talking about, that might be helpful for the public.
So the election on May 31st was going to be.
Yeah, the special state election for the Senate, the state senator representing the Plymouth and Barnstable district vacated by Vinnie DiMascio had been rescheduled from March 31st, next Tuesday, until, until May 19th, which would, again, coincide with our annual town election, which is also on May 19th.
Great. And obviously, we will continue to update the public as we get more information, if, if those dates change or if there's any changing at all to the way that the election is going to move forward. So we appreciate all the work that's being done, and it's, it's obviously really hard to balance both the importance of voting and democracy, along with this public health crisis. So, you know, it's, it's continuing to be a moving target. I am going to read now from our town moderator, David Viera, the declaration of recess and continuance. This is in regards to town meeting, which obviously is, the original date was right around the corner. And we wanted to make sure that as we go to print this week on the town meeting booklets, that we have some information about the fact that town meeting is going to be delayed. And that is what I'm going to read to you now from our moderator. So here we go. Pursuant to Mash General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10A, I, David T. Viera, Falmouth Town Moderator, do hereby declare the town of Falmouth annual town meeting scheduled for April 13th, 2020, recessed and continued until the third Monday following the expiration of the gubernatorial declared state of emergency relative to the 2019 COVID, excuse me, 2019 novel coronavirus COVID-19. In consultation with the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Health Agent of the Board of Health, I have determined that a public safety emergency will prevent town meeting members from attending the meeting on April 13th. The nature of the emergency is the outbreak of COVID-19. In making this declaration, I note that on March 10th, 2020, Governor Charles D. Baker declared a state of emergency in the Commonwealth and prohibited gatherings of more than 250 people throughout Massachusetts. Further COVID-19 Order Number 13 issued on March 23rd, 2020 prohibited gatherings of more than 10 people. Although these prohibitions exempt municipal legislative bodies, in order to preserve our cherished principle of separation of powers, turnout for Falmouth Town Meeting exceeds 10 individuals, and the exemption does not diminish the health, health risk to town meeting members and citizens in attending a meeting on April 13th. In addition to consulting with the Selectmen and Board of Health, I have reviewed guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Given the rapid spread of the disease, the present lack of containment, and the risk to vulnerable populations inherent in public gatherings, I conclude that delaying the Falmouth Town Meeting is in, excuse me, delaying the Falmouth Annual Town Meeting is in the best interest of the town and its citizens. I therefore declare that the continued date of the Falmouth Annual Town Meeting shall be the third Monday following the expiration of the gubernatorial declared state of emergency convene at 7:00 PM at the Lawrence School Auditorium located at 113 Lakeville Avenue, Falmouth, Mass. Given at Falmouth, Mass., 5:00 PM this 23rd day of March, 2020, David T. Viera, Town Moderator. So we certainly have been in contact and discussions with David. And this goes without saying that obviously all precinct meetings are canceled. No precinct meetings can happen during this time period. And as we have further information, the booklets, the town meeting warrant booklets are still going to be published. We're still going to go forward with that, so they will be ready, and we'll be able to go forward at any time that the state of emergency is lifted and that it's appropriate to do so. Any comment from Mr. Palmer or Mr. Suso or any of the board about that particular issue? Doug Jones?
Is there any speculation as to what would occur if we're not having town meeting until after July 1st with the budget?
I only know, and I think Jennifer's gone, so if Peter or Julian want to weigh in, I know DOR has promulgated some guidelines about some of those issues. Is there any clarity that you guys can share on that?
I'm happy to comment that.
I think you muted yourself again, Julian.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, happy to confirm that DOR is, is well into that issue, and there are appropriate remedies in place in order to accommodate our needs should the delay that Selectman Jones mentioned occur.
Great. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Palmer before we let him go? Great. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Palmer before we let him go?
I'll just make one more, one more comment is that we are accepting absentee ballot applications and people, anybody that has filled them out and received a ballot and mailed them back in, those will be held and counted when the election does take place. So if people can take advantage of that opportunity to vote by absentee, it'll leave some of the fear of going out and actually voting when the election time comes around.
And could you just, for that purpose, Mike, could you just quickly explain if folks, I think a lot of people don't understand absentee, so could you just explain how they can utilize that?
And there's a question about who's eligible to submit an absentee ballot. When you read it, it doesn't necessarily give us the opportunity under these circumstances. So if they're broadening that, a comment to that effect would be helpful.
Yes, there are three particular reasons why you can vote by absentee ballot. One is won't be in town on Election Day, two, you have religious beliefs, and three, you have a physical disability that prevents you from going to the polling place. I guess if you're self-quarantined, that could fall into that category of disability that does not allow you to go to the polling place. So I think there's some leeway there. Obviously, some of the other leeways, people say they're not in town, I'm checking to see if they're at home, but I certainly think some leeway with the self-quarantine aspect of it, deciding that you're, that's a disability that's not allowing you to go to the polls. So I think we encourage people to use an absentee ballot, that is, as the opportunity to vote by absentee ballot.
Great, and I appreciate you, go ahead, Sam.
Are we restricted to mailing in the absentee ballots, or will there be a ballot box outside of town hall?
We, at this point, would prefer that there's plenty of time before the election at this point. I would prefer that you mail them in rather than putting them in. There's weather outside and they're using that box with a tax collector rather than absentee ballots at this point. But there's plenty of time to mail those absentee ballots in, so that would be the preferred method at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you, Mike, just, you know, reiterating and reminding folks that if they voted in this election already by absentee ballot, their vote is valid, it's, it will be counted, it's just going to be held until that election takes place. So if you've, if you've already done that civic duty, it's not going to be required to worry about doing that again. These, you know, your vote has been, you know, accounted for. So thank you. Yep, Sam?
On another subject while you're here, Michael, on the census, it really states that we're not supposed to go online and enter our census data until after the 1st of April. Is that still going to happen? And then I suppose, and we're supposed to actually mail in the census form? Is my interpretation, interpretation correct?
Well, that is the U.S. Census different than the census we do on an annual basis, and they are requesting that you do it online. And you're, you're doing it online as of April 1st, the people that will be present in your household in order to get counted as of April 1st. They, the preferred method is to go online. They will, they will mail it out after that, and if they don't get a response after that, they're going to be people knocking on doors. And obviously, economically, the preferred option is, is filling out that survey online.
We've got lots of free time now, so fill out the survey, either on paper or online. This is a good time to do it before everybody gets back to the busyness of, of school and the hectic work schedule. So census is really critical. I hope people recognize that it, it means actual, you know, dollars of support for our region. It's not just a way, you know, there's a reason we collect that information, but there's a real direct benefit. So it's very important for folks to take time to fill that census out. So we hope people do so. Great, thank you so much, Michael. We really appreciate you being here to answer those questions.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, next, let's just have a discussion about how we're going to conduct future Board of Selectmen meetings. Obviously, we are, you know, this has worked, I think, fairly well. There is the fact that we need to work in some more ability for public comment. Hopefully, we can do that as time goes on. Public comment is certainly a very important part of our agenda. It's a little bit cumbersome to do it with this. It's, it's easy with this technology, it's just cumbersome if folks aren't downloading Zoom and they're not comfortable with it. But we can, we're certainly going to continue to work on that. Sue?
I just wonder if folks could tape a public comment, if the technology would allow, within the time limits, a short tape, something to ask Greg.
Greg, would you be able to weigh in on that now? Are you comfortable answering that, or is that something we can look into?
Definitely something that we plan on improving, and I, one way or another, I can't project too much of how it will look like. I'm sure we will get a much easier way for the public to comment on future meetings.
Great, thank you. And Julian or Peter, is there anything that you wanted to weigh in on in terms of our future Selectmen meetings?
Sure, I would just add that we are monitoring what the other communities are doing, and a lot of them are using Zoom, a couple of them are using some other technologies, the same conversations that we've been having, others have been having in terms of managing public comment via chat only, or whether it's too unwieldy to try to bring in everyone that wants to participate by video or by voice. So as, you know, we'll get better at this and we'll, you know, continue to explore whether this is the best approach and continue to learn from our peer communities as well.
Great, thank you. Doug?
The one thing I would add for a public comment, we could do exactly what Joe Neto did, was just encourage people to send an email to us that will be read by one of us as they enter into the public comment period.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, yes. Also, just wanted to note, another thing that we're exploring is, as you know, we don't have the PowerPoint available for members of the, of the Board or, or the public to view that would be relevant to particular presentations. That's something we're also working on with the assistance of Greg Vanworth and, and the Zoom technology. So there are a few bumps in the road there, and I want to thank, there were some folks who anticipated being involved in this meeting, but we had to shorten the agenda because of the changes in logistics that we had. So we appreciate everyone's patience with that as well.
Yes, certainly. It's a learning process. It's a pretty steep and fast learning curve. But for the meeting to be able to cover as much as we did, and in a fairly, I don't want to jinx it, I'm knocking on wood, but in a fairly smooth way, you know, that's the, the job of this Board to go forward. And I do want to note that I did get, I did get a message from David Viera just while we were talking, that part of the Governor's, there's a bill that was passed, it's on the Governor's desk, so it hasn't been signed yet, but it will address the issue of anybody who's really dealing with staying at home and responding to the state of emergency around COVID-19 will be eligible for an absentee ballot. So there's some more clarification. Again, obviously, the legislature is, is doing the same thing that we are, which is working fast and furiously to try and address all of these concerns around elections. There's also some other possible legislation and decisions around being able to do sort of one-twelfth budget. So budgeting, looking at budgets per month for municipalities. So again, lots of people working on solutions for the challenge in front of us. So we'll continue to share that information with the public as we get it.
Madam Chair, one other item perhaps, I understand the legislature's also, we're among several communities specifically requesting it, that it asks for some regulatory relief from the legislature for those boards and commissions that do have strict deadlines in the statutes to act upon proposals coming before them at the risk otherwise of them being automatically approved. So we look forward to some statutory relief from those as well, and we appreciate our legislators working on that.
Great, thank you. Good point. Okay, we have approved 2020 annual seasonal license renewals. So I will read them, and then if Doug Brown, could you just second them when I get to the end of a category, and I will call your name out for the roll call vote, so we can just try and do this smoothly. All alcohol restaurant license, Falmouth Robber, 56 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth. Landfall Restaurant, 9 Lescombe Avenue, Woods Hole. Pier 37 Boathouse, 88 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth. Quicks Hole Taqueria, 6 Lescombe Avenue, Woods Hole. Chuckers, 91A Water Street, Woods Hole.
Second those.
Okay, all those in favor, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great. All alcohol club license, Seaco Shores Association, 7 Fairview Lane, East Falmouth.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran? Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Common Victorio license, a tea room, 196 Crystal Springs Avenue, North Falmouth. And Smitty's, 326 East Falmouth, Highway East Falmouth, and Clam Shack, 227 Clinton Avenue, Falmouth.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran? Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Lodging house license, Frederick William House, 594 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth. Captain's Manor Inn, 27 West Main Street, Falmouth.
I'll second those.
Okay, roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran? Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great. Secondhand dealer, Faze Gallery, 566 Main Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Doug Jones?
Jones, aye.
And Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Last bowling alley pool table, Ryan Family Amusements, 23 Town Hall Square, Falmouth. Trade Center Bowl, 89 Spring Bars Road, Falmouth.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
English Braga, aye, sorry. Jones?
Jones, aye.
And Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great, thank you. We have some minutes of the public session, March 9th, 2020.
Point of order, Madam Chair? I didn't receive those.
No, you're right. I don't see them, so-
Madam Chair, those are still being prepared.
No problem, so we will put that over. Any individual Selectmen report? Doug Brown, did you have one? You're, you're muted, but you're saying no?
I'm saying nothing important to report.
Okay, great. Anybody? Okay, town manager report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief summary on the past week. I won't recount in this report, the challenging work week which we just completed. As the Board's aware, there's absolutely no script for what has already occurred, nor what lies ahead. I want to thank the Board for your steadfast understanding and support for the necessary actions and initiatives we have undertaken to protect the health and safety of our residents and our fellow employees. I continue to work closely with Health Agent Scott McGann and all of our Public Safety Command staff in proceeding forward one day at a time. Be assured that we continue to review options and alternatives in preparation for the days ahead, and in collaboration with other municipal, state, and national resources. I am most appreciative of the diligent work of all our colleagues in public service for the residents of Falmouth. They have responded with continued service to the public and innovated as needed to accommodate temporary adjustments in our working environment, all this while maintaining a positive upbeat outlook. I am indeed proud to be working with them. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate those comments. We all share that sentiment, and I hope the people of Falmouth know that all of the, the employees, excuse me, staff, all the individuals who work for the town are continuing to provide the high level of service that they always have. This Board is going to continue to really get the best information that we can, can have, have open communication. So, you know, I think I just want the public to understand that the conversations are going on daily, they're going on hourly, to make sure that we have the right information to make the best decisions to keep our community safe, and to be able to go forward on a strong footing when this crisis is over. So we really value all the input we get via, whether it's phone calls or email. We hope that the public continues to do that, and we hope that everyone stays healthy. So thank you very much.
I move adjourn.
Do a second? All those in favor, by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
And Patterson?
Definitely aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, take care.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape'n Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bocatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth, just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms